To another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley. We are joined this week by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey, hey, everyone. Really glad you're here today.
We also have Julie and Colin, the incomparable amazing duo here from our team. What's up you guys?
Hello.
How's it going, everyone?
We're excited to have you here today where we are going to be talking about how you can host and run webinars using Get Oiling. We're so excited to have you here. Head over into the chat. Let us know where in the world you are and let us know what you plan on teaching on your next webinar. We're always excited to hear from you. This is a live call that we offer every single Thursday at noon Eastern US time. Aside from holidays, which by the way, quick bit of housekeeping, next Thursday is Thanksgiving here in the US. And so we will have a pre-recorded session ready to go for you. At the same time, it'll be broadcasting on YouTube instead. So just make sure that you're signed up for our list and you will get that notification. And we'll be able to check out what we put together for you next week. Welcome, everybody. Again, I see we've got Netherlands, Oklahoma, Buffalo, New York. Again, just keep it coming. We're always thrilled to have you here. We are a call that is open to everyone in Team Young Living. Today, of course, we are talking about a very tech-focused topic. That is the stuff that we like to talk about on a weekly basis, but that's not the only thing that we talk about here. If you are someone who is sharing young living and you're looking for ways to work smarter, not harder. And of course, if you are a part of the Get Oiling community, you use our software. This, of course, is going to be a great home for you to get new ideas, new perspectives, and learn how to work in that smarter way. So, welcome again. We're excited to have you. We're going to pop out of videos that we can get into some slides that I've prepared for you today. And then we will be getting into plenty of screen sharing if you guys would like to see it to actually get a little show and tell going on. If you want to see how you can implement what I'll be talking about today on your own using our Get Oiling system. Because everything that you can, everything that you need to do for today's topic is something that you can accomplish with just a Get Oiling account, only a Get Oiling account. So that should be very exciting to you if you have ever looked up pricing for webinar software and all of the other things that you might need to grow your business in this professional digital environment. I think you might find this to be a breath of fresh air that you can get it all done right here in one place for one price. So today, we're going to talk about webinars and Get Oiling, what that looks like. We'll share some systems and workflows for you for live webinars as well as on-demand webinars. Meaning you have a recording of a previously recorded webinar that people can sign up to view on demand anytime in the future. So an evergreen webinar, we could say. And then, as always, we will get into live help and Q and A. That is a big part of why we have these calls every week. You can come here and get your questions asked. We have the founder of the platform here who created it. We've got Julie and Colin, who are total experts on the platform and how it works. So if you're here looking for help, go ahead and add those questions to the Q and A. We can obviously get to those while we are on the call, while I'm going through today's training. But it's also a great place to keep them if it's something that maybe I need to address after I am done speaking to today's topic. Now, if you are watching this as a recording or you are seeing this streaming in our Facebook group, make sure that you head over to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list for these calls so that you can join us live, participate in Q and A, be the first to receive resources as they're shared, and of course, hang out with this incredible community. If you are looking for a little bit more help, we do have opportunity to work with you live on your website or any projects that you're working on using your Get Oiling system on calls, just like this one on Thursdays. If you'd like to reserve time, go to getoiling.com/web site review and you can pick a Thursday noon Eastern US session in the future that you would like to set aside time to work together. And if you would just like to have somebody get these things done for you, we've got you covered there too. Go to getoiling.com/conceiers to learn a little bit more about our team and the ways they can help you get things done and grow. So question for you guys, let me know in the chat. Do you use webinars for your business? Do you get online and teach? And have people on those live calls with you where you are teaching, where you're instructing? And if you do, how do you use them? What does that look like? What kind of topics are you talking about? Who are you teaching these topics to? What does that look like for you? Go ahead and get that conversation going into the chat. Let us know what that looks like. We've got some not yet. So some folks who are interested in hosting webinars, exciting. Well, I hope that after today, you will feel confident in scheduling your first one. So first things first, let's talk about webinar 101. I wanted to kind of get some confusion out of the way first. So webinar as a term is a portmanteau, which is a, you know, it's a combination of two words together, which would be web, right? And seminar. So basically you are teaching to an audience as one would in a seminar, except it's happening on the web. Now, there are specialized software that are branded for webinars specifically. If you are with us here right now, we are actually using that. And that is actually something that works slightly differently from Zoom meetings. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't have webinars using Zoom meetings. I don't know if you've ever checked out the pricing page. Colin and I were talking about this before the call started today. Webinar software can get quite expensive and depending on where you are and what your budget looks like for your business, it just might not make the most sense for you at this stage to invest in webinar software. Now, if you have an audience in the many hundreds who could potentially all be on a call all at once, you may have a reason to go and, and actually get a license for Zoom webinars, right? So if you want to make sure that you are the only person, maybe plus a panelist, who can be seen and heard on a call that you are offering, then you do have a reason to maybe look into using a specific webinar software. However, what I'm going to be sharing with you today is how you can use Zoom meetings. And this is going to cover, I believe, over 90% of us who are here today or who will be using this in the future. You don't have to have a special software to host a webinar. So the webinar feature, what we're talking about here today, Karen, is Zoom meetings and how we use Zoom meetings and smart systems inside of your Get Oiling system to deliver all of the features that you would experience if you were to sign up for a webinar software, like go have a seat at a webinar using webinar software. You can more or less create that exact experience, but using just your Get Oiling system, which of course has Zoom meetings included. So what this essentially is, is where we've got an interactive online meeting where the host teaches. That's what a webinar is, and you do not have to have special software for it. You can obviously use a webcam to show your face while you're speaking. You could be recording the screen, voicing over what people are seeing like you're seeing right now, or a combination of both, which is what you'll typically see on our webinars that we host. Now, of course, if you have an agenda, right? If you know what you want to talk about and you can hit record, you can host a webinar. If you know what you want to talk about, you got some people you want to share it with, and you can hit a record button. You can offer a webinar. And this is such a great way for you to be able to deliver value to people who aren't a part of your business yet. So people who are leads, who need to maybe build a bit more trust with you before they decide to take next steps. And of course, for your clients, if you are someone who is educating, and that's a part of how you deliver paid value, or if you serve clients in other ways, webinars are a great way to obviously provide an interactive educational experience, whether that's live or recorded. And of course, you do have the option to do either or both. So let's talk about what's needed. If you want to host a live webinar, first things first, you only need Get Oiling. Everything is here in Get Oiling. Unless, of course, maybe you want to make some slides to use, which of course, that's a matter of preference. I'm using the one that just comes with my computer, right? You could use a PowerPoint type software. You could even use Canva to create slides, but that's a completely different thing. So first, we need to have our call details. What are we talking about? When are we doing it? What's the date and time, right? So start with that. When's it going to be? What's it going to be about? We need Zoom to be able to host the live call and we will use the Zoom meetings feature in Get Oiling. We'll need a page on your website for folks to register for the live webinar. We'll need a confirmation page that they'll go to after they register that just reiterates the details of the webinar confirms that they've signed up. And then we'll need a campaign and that's going to confirm that they've registered. It's going to share details about the call and it'll remind them before you have the live call. Now, everything you need to get this done is in Get Oiling and you could have this set up today. It's very simple and I'm going to walk you through all of the steps. So the workflow to set this up is as follows for a live webinar. First, you're going to create a Zoom meeting, right? So schedule your Zoom meeting in Get Oiling. And you're going to save the join link. It's going to say copy link. That's the link that you want to save because that's what you want to share in our subsequent steps. Then we're going to create a campaign that is going to be a date-based campaign. I'll show you exactly what this looks like in a moment. But what we're going to do with this campaign is on the immediate day zero. So that's ASAP. It's going to go out to them right away. The message that they receive is going to confirm that they've registered and share the call details with the person who registered. It will also send them a reminder, maybe the day before the call with the Zoom link. You could also send them a reminder. At the very least, you want to make sure you send them a reminder an hour before the call. Again, sharing that Zoom link, okay? Then we need to create a super simple confirmation page, right? That just reiterates the webinar details, tells them that they've successfully signed up. And then finally, we create the page that does all the heavy lifting, one that offers the webinar so that folks can register and sends your campaign, redirects them to that confirmation page, and then tags them with the name of the webinar or something similar so that you can locate those registered, those registered people and communicate with them as needed from your contact manager. Okay, so here's what this looks like. You're going to go into video meetings. So this is your Zoom meetings in your Get Oiling system. You're going to click Schedule Meeting, that green button. Then we're going to set up our video meeting. So I've named this My Awesome Webinar. That'll be the name of this webinar throughout the example here. I've scheduled it for November 22nd, 27th, 2023 at noon Eastern Time. It's an hour long. We're going to automatically start the video for me, but no one else, and I'm going to mute participants upon entry. This is the same as Zoom meetings. If you go to Zoom meetings in your, in your Get Oiling system, if you look over on the left-hand side on your dashboard, or you put it in the search bar at the top, you'll be able to find the page that says Video Meetings where you can click Schedule Meeting and move forward. All right, so this is how I prefer to have a webinar-style meeting set up. Now, you'll notice that I've got a couple of, couple of key things that I want to point out here. Obviously, we've got our name, we've got the time, the duration, and who we start the video for. I do not want to start the video for participants because they are not presenters, right? So I'm going to turn the video on for myself and I'm going to mute everyone else. So I like to keep these here as the, this, the automatically start video and the mute settings. And then I don't check any of these things down at the bottom. Allowing meetings attendees to join before the host, the, the waiting room, none of this stuff. I don't check any of this. I also don't auto-record to my computer because we're actually going to be utilizing a really cool feature in Get Oiling that's going to save you a ton of time. It's going to utilize cloud recording. Now, if you do have a preference to save this to your computer, which in fact is something that we do with our recurring calls, because I do a minor amount of editing before we put them on YouTube. You could also choose this auto-record setting here, but you are going to want to make sure that you're recording to the cloud. If you want to follow these super easy instructions I'll be sharing with you here. All right. So create this, this meeting here, My Awesome Webinar. We're creating this. This is what it looks like over on the right. Once you've created it, there's that copy link I've got circled. That's the link that you're going to want to grab because we're going to put that into our campaign. That's what we're going to be sending out to the people who register so they can join. Now, you do have the ability to grab this ICS file here that's also circled. This allows people to put your awesome webinar here onto their calendar so they can get calendar reminders for this as well. That's totally optional, but just wanted to make sure that you saw that that is a really cool thing that you can offer that is here. All right, so we've got our Zoom meeting set up. Now, we're going to create a campaign. So we go to Campaigns, we click Add, and we create the campaign here. It's named My Awesome Webinar. I'm preferring email delivery. That's my preference of how I set up most campaigns is to prefer email. If email doesn't send and we happen to have a phone number, this will allow for a text to be sent instead. So on day zero of the campaign, staying over here on the left-hand side of the screen, day zero, that's going to go out immediately. We are going to share details of the call. We're telling them your seat is saved for the awesome webinar. Here's the details and we are sharing the link to join the Zoom call here. So they could go ahead and save this or they can search for it later when it's time and they'll be able to find it easily. Okay? Now, after I've created this, this message, I've actually created a couple more because I want to send them the, the evening or afternoon before the call. I'm going to remind them that we have a call tomorrow. And then an hour before the call, I would like to send them another reminder as well. So I've created those two emails. So you'll see that I have three emails in this campaign. Zero sends out immediately. One goes out and says our webinar is tomorrow. And then two goes out the day of, an hour before. Now, you'll notice that what I've done here is up here in the top right corner, I have decided to send this on a specific date. And you could see that with our day one and day two, this correlates. Now, remember, when I set up this webinar, I set it up for the 27th at, at noon Eastern Time. So I have set this up to where, quite literally, because that's 11:00. We're going to send this out at 11:00 Eastern Time, 10:00 Central. That is one hour before. So you have the ability to really dial this in and make sure that this sends at the appropriate date and time. So you're going to make sure that this is modified to reflect the schedule that you want it to send on. And yes, Sandra, we can get a PDF version of this PowerPoint for you to follow if you'd like as well, for sure. All right, now we're going to go to Pages in your Get Oiling system and create a new page. This is super simple. Chose a blank page, no template, and then added a section that just had one column with a header. And I said, you're registered. Be sure to add my email to your address book so you don't miss what's coming your way. And then here's the webinar, the date and the time. And I've actually chosen to include that ICS file here so they can actually download that calendar event to their calendar software. So that's it. That's what the page looks like in that single section. In the settings here, all I'm doing is making sure that this is shown by link only. I don't want everybody on the internet to be able to find this page, only people who arrive here via a link. So I've chosen that. That's an important thing. And of course, it's named appropriately. The title bar text is going to show up that they are here on this page that confirms that they've registered for My Awesome Webinar. And then finally, over here on the bottom right, you can see that this is what the published page will look like. We see the footer for her website, the header for her website, and then of course, we've got this quick confirmation message. All right. Now, final thing that we need to do is create the page where people register. So we've created another page. This is called My Awesome Webinar. Keeping things in theme, I've used the Jenna homepage template, which is one of the page templates available to you when you create a new page in Get Oiling. In this button here where it says Save My Seat, the URL here is hashtag lead because we're going to have a pop-up on this page. The page, of course, like I mentioned, is named My Awesome Webinar, and it is shown everywhere. Unless, of course, you only want certain people to be able to see and register for this, in which case you could change the, the page is shown settings to by link only. Now, if we go over to the Leads tab in this, in, in your page settings for this page, we want to make sure that our Lead Capture message is modified, of course, to reflect the details for the call they're registering for and the call to action that you want to have. And then we're going to connect that campaign that we've created. We're going to send them to that confirmation page that we've just created. And then we're going to add the tag, in this case, the name of the webinar and the date of the webinar because it's live. That's my personal choice. You could obviously choose to tag however you would like. All right? So this is what ties everything together and it's ultimately what folks will engage with in order to register for your live webinar. And so it would basically look like this when they arrive, when they click Save My Seat, they'll see the pop-up. They put in their name, email and phone, and then of course, they're going to receive that campaign, which gives them an immediate confirmation that they have signed up. And then, of course, they'll get those reminders before this call takes place, right? And then the next page they'll see will, it'll confirm the same information. All right, so when it's time to go live for your webinar, we're going to go onto our Zoom meetings and find this one that we've created. Here it is, My Awesome Webinar. We're going to click Start Meeting. That's going to open up Zoom meetings. Now, you'll see here that when you're in your meeting, you do actually have several settings. And I definitely recommend if you go to, to View, that you choose the Speaker View. And that's going to have the recording follow along with what you're seeing. It'll show your face. It'll show what you're showing on your screen, et cetera. And, and you can actually kind of modify what that looks like. Now, when you are ready to start recording, right? If you are planning to, to share a replay of this call or to use it for other purposes in the future, as soon as you're ready to begin the recording, you're going to go down here to Record in Zoom and you're going to select Record to the Cloud. And the reason why we want to do that is because after you have completed that call and it's had a chance to upload into your system, under Video Meetings, right? Exactly where you went to launch your, your, your meeting for your webinar. You go to My Recordings and you're going to see that one of these is available for you. And so it's, you're going to see the name, My Awesome Webinar. Here's when we did it. And then under Active Speaker, you're going to see there is an option to copy into your video library. Now, when you do that, it might take a few minutes, but once you do, it's going to bring you right over here to your videos. It'll actually show you a link where you can say, check my video library. When you go there, you can actually see that your webinar recording is right there. All right, so, so you'll now have this video here ready to use. This is something that you could send out directly, which I'll show you how to do in just a moment, but you could also embed this onto a page. If you choose, that could be a page in your vault, lots of different options there, right? So if you want to send this replay out to people who registered, we're going to begin by going to our dashboard. We're going to select Send Email, Text or App Notification. It's going to give us an opportunity to send one message or a campaign. We're going to send one message. And we're going to filter our contacts for that tag that was on our page where they registered, right? So that's everybody who has the tag My Awesome Webinar with a date. We're going to write them an email. And over here, we're going to send an email. We're going to actually click the Video button. The Video button in this editor is going to allow you to insert a link to your video. And if you're using this feature, it will actually populate an interactive image that will send via the email. It actually almost looks like the video is in the email, even though it's not. It's kind of cool. So you're going to see this pop-up screen that says Upload or Add Video. You're going to find that webinar recording, click Select Video, choose the option that's appropriate to you. You could just send them straight to the video on your website, or of course, you could send them to a page or to a URL where that video would be embedded. When you click Add Video to Email, you'll see that it actually populates right here in the email that you're going to send out to the people who are tagged. From here, you can schedule it or send it right away and everyone has access to your replay. Pretty cool, right? So now let's talk about what an on-demand webinar would require. How many of you guys have, however, maybe taken advantage of an on-demand webinar? There's several ways that this is often done. One of them is pretty straightforward and the other is a little, I don't know, kind of sneaky, in my opinion. There's a lot of strategy out there in the digital space where folks advocate for a sort of fake live webinar. Have you ever been on one of those where, you know, someone's registering to take a seat in this webinar and, and it, and it's scheduled? There's a time. It seems like it's live, but it's actually not. It's, it's actually a recording. Those are, I, I think they're painfully obvious, like the, the fakeness. And I'm just not a fan of assuming that the person that I'm sharing information with lacks intelligence. And so I think being straightforward is kind of the way to go, right? And so with that in mind, you can offer on-demand viewing of a webinar that we all know you previously recorded. And it's totally fine. And in fact, it's actually even easier than offering the live webinar, right? There are cases for, for a live webinar, of course, in many cases, those can be even more valuable or powerful opportunities to do things like maybe, you know, connecting with people, pitching an offer, et cetera. But if you're just trying to share information and it's something that's valuable, that it's valuable to your business after it's been recorded, why not set it up for people to take advantage of it when they're ready to see it, right? So here's what you need. You need a video recording of that webinar replay. All right, now, if you've already followed the instructions in the last step, then we have a video recording of our webinar replay already in our Get Oiling video library. We will then need a page where someone can register to view this webinar. Sorry for this replay. I left live in there. My bad. So a page to register for the webinar viewing, to view the, the pre-recorded webinar. We'll need a confirmation page that will share the webinar details and then a campaign that confirms registration and then sends in the video. It's actually a little bit simpler, right? So everything, again, that you need to offer on-demand webinar viewing is available to you in your Get Oiling account. So the workflow is as follows. You're going to add that video to Get Oiling. It may already be there if this was originally a live call. You'll then want to create a campaign that on day zero is going to confirm their registration. It's going to send them a link to the video, or if you have that video maybe on its own page on your site. The video is embedded on a page on your website. You could do that there. And then, of course, as is often the case where you have an on-demand webinar, you want to have additional messages that you're sending. So if you're sending them access to an on-demand workshop that, you know, talks about problem X, Y or Z, you probably sell something and you maybe even mentioned the thing that you sell in that webinar. And so you would want to essentially combine your sales campaign into this webinar, right? So, or this, this webinar campaign, so that after they've had the opportunity to view that workshop or webinar, et cetera, on demand, you've got an email sequence that's following up with them, right? That's, that's dripping this information out to them as you would like for them to receive. Then we will want to have a confirmation page, of course, that shares webinar details, tells them to check their email. The access to the webinar is on the way to your inbox now. And then we want to have finally a page that offers that webinar where they can register. It's going to send that campaign and it's going to redirect to that confirmation page and tag them with the name of the webinar or whatever similar tag you'd like to use. Now, we do have additional training on this, especially if you're someone who wants to host calls that are live on a recurring basis, exactly like we do for our weekly work session, for instance. If you want to see sort of what that workflow looks like, so if you're going to host weekly calls, monthly calls, this is a training that you will find. There's a checklist that goes along with it because it is a repeating system. This is something that you're going to want to check out. You can go to the, the Success Academy in Get Oiling and type in Recurring Live Calls and you'll see this training show up for you there. So let's get into any Q and A that might, might come up here. If there's anything more that you would like to know about how a system like this would be run. We could certainly also go and take a look at how we could modify the live version and turn that into one that is evergreen. So let's go ahead and take a look at that first. So assuming that we have already uploaded our video, which we can actually go down here to our content library to videos. And we can see that My Awesome Webinar is right here. Our video is available for use. So we've got that first thing checked off. The next thing that we want to ask ourselves is whether or not we want to send them straight to view the video, which they could actually go to. which they could actually go to, um, a link, right? So if we share this with the link, we copy the link, we could send them to a page on our site that looks very similar to this, there's nothing else there, it's just the video. Depending on what your strategy is for utilizing, um, a recorded webinar. You know, often this is something that you're going to use as a sort of adjunct sales tool, right? So this is something you're going to use, um, to facilitate a bigger purchase perhaps. What you may want to consider doing is actually embedding this onto a page on your website that would maybe have a call to action underneath it, that sends them to a sales page when they click, uh, or offers a call with you or whatever that might look like, right? You could even have links to, uh, Young Living wish lists underneath or to products. If you're talking about specific products in the video, uh, you could certainly set something like that up. So either way, we want to have our video in the system and then we want to decide how we're going to share the video. Is it going to be just the video or are we going to put it onto a page that fulfills a greater purpose? Now, the next thing that we would do here is with our campaigns, it's going to be up here under contacts. I'm actually going to go and find our, um, existing one that we would have used for the live campaign. I'm going to duplicate this, uh, and I'm going to call this evergreen, the evergreen version of my off awesome webinar. And that means that people can, uh, they can opt in anytime. So it's not going to go out on a specific date. And, uh, we also don't need these additional messages reminding them about the live date. So our first email that goes out, your seat is saved, it's going to go out right away. And we can say, we can actually remove all of this and say, um, I'm actually going to remove this link here, so I'll say head over here now to watch the webinar, right? And I'm going to go hit video. I'm going to select this video, I'm just going to send them to, uh, the video on the website. And this is what will go out to them. Right? And so that's how we can put that together. And, uh, now as soon as somebody registers, they can, um, receive a link to go and watch that video right away. Now you may choose to add another message to this campaign, uh, and, and maybe say, did you catch the webinar? I shared one thing that might make a big difference. So just in case they didn't see it, maybe you put some, you know, some kind of message here that talks about a point that you made. Maybe you put the link to watch the video again in here. Uh, maybe you start working on your actual sales message or call to action, et cetera. So you can actually build out this campaign to where it drips out more if you choose. Uh, but this is how we would set that up for evergreen. Now let's go to our pages. I'll go ahead and create one from scratch here, just like I did for the first confirmation page. I'm just using a blank page. I'm going to use a one column with header, that's this one here. I'll say your seat is saved. Now check your email, right? Because their access is going to be granted there. So this is where, you know, and on the rest of this page, you're just basically going to say, I've sent a link to you, add my email address to your address book, et cetera, right? Whatever it is that you feel like you need to say, you can put that here and keep it super simple. Um, this is again, it's going to need to be named. So this would be my awesome webinar, um, on demand is what I'll call it here, because we'll say watch on demand. Cause this is what they're going to see in the title bar. It's available by link only and this page is done. Obviously you make some modifications to the copy there. So with that done, uh, we will go and create an additional page as where someone will register. This is that Jenna template homepage. I'm only going to modify the top section and the lead form, you of course, you know, have more to work with here if you choose, uh, to use this. This is actually all perfectly fine, create a life of freedom, watch the free workshop. This is hashtag lead, okay? That just means that it's going to pop up the lead form, uh, when they click it. So let's go under leads here in the settings. Want to make sure that we modify what's here. We're not going to have anything about date and time because this is going to be an evergreen, um, option for people to check out the webinar. And then what to do after they register, we're going to have that webinar evergreen campaign. We're going to go my awesome webinar evergreen. And we're going to send them to there we go. When we've got that all set up, then we have the full system, of course, we need to rename this. And you can name it accordingly, obviously change the title bar text, et cetera. And yeah, that's, that's essentially it. Once you have all of this set up, then you can offer this anytime. And whenever they register on this page by clicking this button, filling out the form, they'll immediately receive that email from you. That's going to send them access to the recording. Okay, so Cornelia had a question, I think the setup is clear. I've had some mistakes by refurbishing a campaign after a live webinar. I tried to add messages as a follow-up after, set them all, um, but had to change something which didn't really work out. What can I change in a live campaign that will not change after I've connected? Okay, so campaigns aren't live, uh, and I think that that's the main distinction. So, um, the reason why, I'll, I'll give an example here. So when I shared with you the date-based campaign and that first example of offering a live webinar with a campaign attached to it, I did not include an email in that campaign with a replay. And the reason why is that I don't have a link to share with them yet. Now, if I did have a page on my website that I had already created that just didn't have the video in it yet, then I could actually add the replay to that sequence. But it's still a little bit tricky because you know, what if there's an issue with how you've captured the recording? What if something happens live and you don't want to send that out, right? A campaign is going to go out to your contact exactly as it was written when they opted in. You would have to remove the campaign from your contacts entirely and then reapply it uh, in its new form, if you wanted to make some kind of a modification. So where a replay is concerned, um, or if there are, if you anticipate any real possibility of details either being unclear and unshareable at the start, uh, or changing, uh, that you opt to use broadcasts, right? So that's actually what we do with our recurring live calls. Every week there are three scheduled emails, uh, that are created. And those are, we filter for the people who are tagged and those are the folks who signed up and said, I want to be notified of these calls. We filter for the people who are tagged, which changes week by week, people opt in, they opt out. And then we schedule an email that says, here's what we're talking about this week. We'll see you on Thursday, opt in here, you know, if you want to watch. And then on Thursday, you're going to get a call or a call, you're going to get an hour before the call, an email that's scheduled. And then a couple hours after, uh, once the replay is downloaded, that is scheduled, right? So in, in a case like that, we're not going to use campaigns for anything other than a confirmation message. And depending on the nature of how you're offering your calls, you might be in a similar position where it just makes sense to rely on broadcasts and just to use, uh, campaigns for the absolute safest, most, um, unchanging parts of, uh, of your system, such as confirmation details. And feel free to, if you have follow-up questions to ask them. If anyone else would like, uh, review of work or if you have any questions um, or things that you want to, um, explore, then, uh, feel free to, to ask those. If we could get them into the Q and A, I promise I won't miss them, uh, but I will go through the chat here as well. I do think, um, and yes, we will put together a PDF and what we'll do is, uh, we'll put it in the description beneath the video on our replay. Uh, and we'll make sure you guys know about that when we send out the, um, replay reminder. And that, that's the third thing that we send out every week, uh, and that is a scheduled broadcast. Kay asked, do you need a different confirmation page for each webinar? Not necessarily, I think that if you have a very general, um, you did it. Look for details in your inbox and you're not talking about anything specific. If that's the message on the page you're using. And this would I think apply for those of you who are maybe on a basic plan, uh, who are trying to work with your 10-page limit on a basic plan, then you could use a very general, um, confirmation page for lots of different offers, right? And that's just basically going to be one that says the details that you want are headed your way now, here's my email address, add it to your whitelist or add it to your address book and go check your email, right? If you're, if you're telling them those three things and everything else is non-specific, then you could get away with using one, uh, for all. But, um, is it more effective to use an individual confirmation page for each thing? Yes, 100%, uh, because that leaves no doubt whatsoever in the mind of the person, what they did and what it's related to and what they need to do next. So if you are on premium, for instance, or higher, uh, then definitely go ahead and create the unique, um, confirmation page. And I think that the, um, the other thing that you might consider here as well, and this gets just a little bit more, um, advanced. But let's just say for instance, you're offering a webinar, um, that is about managing stress in the holiday season. Right? Uh, you want to send them to a page that tells them that they've registered for the webinar. But what if you are going to be talking about a couple of key practices that you follow and you're going to be teaching something that they could follow along with on the call? Maybe you want to double purpose that confirmation page and give it a little bit more something, uh, to help convert into your business. Maybe you say you're registered, the details are on their way to you now, but while you're here, maybe you want to check this out. And that's maybe where on that same page, that confirmation page is not just confirming now. Maybe it's also saying, hey, by the way, I've got this other thing you might like. Hey, by the way, you might want to buy these three things because we're going to use them on the call. Here's a, a link to add them to cart and you'll get my discount, right? You're sending them a Young Living link. So, um, there is definitely a case, uh, to, to take that a step further and to be even more effective. Because the best time to ask for somebody to say yes is after they just said yes to something. Right? So if somebody just said yes to your webinar and they put in their name and their email address, like that's a transaction. It's not a money transaction, but in the brain, it's quite close. So if you wanted to present an opportunity right after that, it is technically one of the better times to do it. All right, Wendy asks, how should you set up the Zoom settings so that the participants don't appear on the screen, just like you do? So the view options in Zoom, uh, are, are how you are going to be able to control that. So, um, for instance, um, you've got, when you, when you click view, and I can't share this with you because I'm in Zoom right now. Uh, but when you click view and that's up in the top right corner in Zoom, um, there's like a little grid. Uh, and so you can see my view is speaker gallery immersive and we're on gallery because we like the Brady Bunch, want you to see the whole team. But then the attendee view, uh, is you've got options there as well, right? So, um, you can actually choose how this is, is shown. So in this case, you follow the hosts view, um, or if you've got multiple people who might be speaking, maybe you're going to choose speaker view. But you know, in some cases, especially if, um, there is any real interactivity. And for those of you who prefer interactivity, this is actually a case for using this system as opposed to going and buying really expensive webinar software. Uh, because you, you know, I, I would have to have invite you guys to individually raise your hands and then manually say, I'm going to bring you out to talk with us. Cause this is a webinar, software webinar that we're on right now. But in a, um, you know, in more of a group oriented setting where that's valuable to you. And there's a lot of cases where it is, you can actually use this gallery view so that people can see more faces, right? And that actually is often quite a lot more effective depending on, um, really what you're hoping to influence with the information that you're sharing on a call, social proof is something that really requires, um, you know, seeing other people participating in a thing. And so having this, um, sort of view of, of more than just you on the screen can often work in your favor in a significant way. Karen says, can you remind me how to swap out a picture in a template that is in a bundle? Like, oh, to swap out a form, not, not a picture in a template, but a form. Yeah, so, uh, actually that could be on a page just like this one. And, uh, if there are images in the form, uh, that's going to be, so just as an example, let's just view this page here. You can see that there's actually an image in this form and then there's the actual form fields. So that's going to be in the page settings for one. And, um, the message to show on the lead capture form, that's where you're going to change the, the sort of design, the visual design. So any copy and any images that you might include, you can modify those here. Uh, you could remove this, if this is going to be a form that displays on a page, uh, you could certainly remove all of this and take care of whatever design that you want on the page itself. And then just have the form be the form on the page. And if you want to modify the actual, um, fields on the form, then you've got this section here where you can add additional ones and change what those inputs are. Got you, yeah, you didn't go to the leads tab. Yeah, so our forms are lead forms, uh, even though you can use them for more than just collecting leads. That's a, you know, just sort of standard there. Uh, and then of course, what you want to happen after they fill out the form is that bottom section there. Good question, let me see what else. Hey, Dr. Brown, I see a question from you. All right, um, I have many seniors on my team who can't get out to classes easily. We were able to teach them to use Zoom and they love getting together weekly for classes. And in Zoom, they can interact, see my PowerPoint, or I can show my screen to teach the things like how I use the Young Living website, library, et cetera. Yeah, I, I think that's yet another example for, you know, while you can have a webinar platform like what we use here. We've had, we've had calls where there could be several hundred people potentially show up. And that can get a little wonky and untenable because people can technically unmute themselves, you know? So there are cases like this one where it makes sense to have a setting like this. But yeah, like, like this is a perfect one. You've got folks who actually enjoy that fellowship aspect of being there together, uh, and of being able to converse. And, um, and that is still a webinar. I mean, since like, ha- have you ever heard of a seminar where there was zero interaction with the crowd? Like, uh, like an in-person seminar, that doesn't exist. So, um, so there's definitely huge benefit, uh, to just using that built-in, uh, meetings feature in your Git Oiling system to host, um, those calls, build community. And, and yeah, I mean, it's, it, it really is just so cool to, to be able to bridge those gaps and to get people, uh, in Dr. Brown's case here, um, to get them interacting with each other in a way that might not have been possible otherwise. That is, um, really like the most glorious thing about using all this technology. It's making the, the beautiful human pieces, uh, more accessible. Awesome. Well, do, if you guys have any more questions, please feel free to go ahead and add those to the Q and A. If there's any, you know, other types of questions, even if they're unrelated, feel free, uh, to ask those. And we are excited to, uh, to help you with whatever you're working on. Let me know in the chat for those of us who are still here also, um, what's the next webinar you intend to host, what are you going to teach? And who is it for? This is a really great platform to, um, to use if you want to build trust with people, build community with people. Uh, and of course, if you have a team, it's a phenomenal way to be able to get together and in a structured environment that is also interactive. You know, share, teach, uh, you know, teach your customers, teach your team. We've got a healthy living support group. Dr. Brown did a class last year on grief and the holidays, we'll be redoing that this year. Oh man, that's a great idea. Karen says, I'm going to record some webinars for my brand partners who are just getting started, love it. Fantastic, yeah. Um, and those webinars, you know, you could put those into a vault, uh, in your, in your member area, Karen. And those then become things that, uh, because they're for your brand partners. If they have access to the vault, then they've got those on-demand classes. Cause you never know, if you're teaching about, um, inviting this week, but you've got somebody that really needs to know like today how to set up for a vendor event. And you've got, you've got both, they could actually go and pick the one. And you've got, you've got both. They could actually go and pick the one that best suits them. Awesome. Well, that's fantastic. I love it. Well, the good news is, is that you can, you don't have to have a vault built to share those videos. You can actually enable the sharing of the video just from your video library and just send a link straight to somebody. So you don't have to have those structures built to get that information out there. Cornelia says, I teach pre and menopausal women working online. We'll do the difference. Make-a-shift classes. Awesome. Planning 2024 to know what to teach and when. Fantastic. Oh, great. Karen, you're doing Jill's vendor events course. That is phenomenal. It's really, really well thought out. She's very, very thorough in her content. Fantastic. Well, good. I'm so excited to see what you guys are working on. I hope that if you celebrate that you are together with family and eating well next week, since we won't be with you here live. And let me see. Also learning a lot about good oiling by going through a training. Yes, awesome. Well, Karen, we're so excited that you're here. We're so excited. So excited that all of you are here and choosing to spend this time with us. If you have any questions that come up, let me just do a quick for those of us who need a refresher. And of course, if you haven't seen this yet, it's so pretty. It looks so nice. The new dashboard, the new working interface with Git Oiling is so cool. But if you head over here to Success Academy, this is where you can actually go and search for those additional trainings. The one I mentioned was recurring. I'm just going to type in recurring live calls. That'll take you straight to where you can find that information right here on our YouTube channel. We actually have live help sessions that you can join throughout the week. We've got courses here. There's a setup checklist. There's common projects. If you want to start getting familiar with the things you can do here. And if you have any questions you need a quick answer to, you can click right here and search our help library. And of course, if you ever want to go through and, and get some in-depth help, you could always request a topic or choose to get together on a call like this one here today. So with that, you guys, I think we're good to go. Feel free to, again, head over into our Facebook group and get to know the community there. Ask your questions. Let us know what else you'd like to learn about. We will be out live next week. There will be a training headed your way though, so definitely keep an eye on your inbox. We have some very exciting things to share for Black Friday as well. So just, you know, be checking your inbox. We'll be in touch with you. And until then, we hope you guys have a great holiday here in the US. And, and of course, we look forward to seeing you on the other side of it. Have a great week, everybody. Take care.